Welcome to tonight's Washington University College trustee meeting. Vanessa, would you please call the roll?
Chair Milligan?
Here.
Treasure DeVarty. Secretary Hatcher. Trustee Fleming.
Fleming here.
Trustee Landau.
Landau here.
Trustee McKnight Morton.
McKnight Morton here.
So we have a quorum, correct? Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda, please?
So approve, support.
Is there any discussion? If not, Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Milligan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Fleming, yes.
Trustee Landau?
Landau, yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
McKnight Morton, yes.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes is before us. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the minutes for our February 23 monthly meeting as submitted. Do I hear a motion?
So both.
And is there support, please?
Support DeVarty.
Thank you. Any discussion? Any corrections? Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Milligan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Treasure DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Trustee Fleming? Trustee Fleming?
Fleming, yes.
Trustee Landau?
Landau, yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
McKnight Morton, yes.
We have approval of the minutes. Thank you. Citizen participation. Verbal communications of Ms. Julie Thistle, are you with us?
I am here and ready to go.
Please proceed.
Good afternoon, everyone. It is March 2021. So at this time last year, we were still in shock and dismay as our world was suddenly upended by COVID. One year later, we more fully understand the impact of this global crisis as we make plans to transition back to campus. While we do have clarity around some issues, there is still much to be considered for fall 2021. In recent weeks, the department chairs have been taxed with making massive changes to the schedule to limit the anticipated on-campus footprint. As these changes were happening just days before the start of fall registration, I want to be sure to recognize their efforts now and their work over the coming months as state and federal guidance shifts. The WCCA continues to field questions and concerns about future planning from the membership. So we will be launching a brief survey later this week to capture these concerns and ideas. Once completed, we will be happy to share any findings with the board and the administration. We're hoping to complement the recent survey from President Blanca, which gives all faculty and staff a chance to reflect on the year we've had and what our future holds. Since fall planning has been top of mind, the WCCEA and the college have finalized letters of agreement regarding on-campus presence, virtual meetings, and virtual office hours. These LOAs offer some structure in a world of unknowns in the fall. This spring-summer, we will also be busy as we look to hire at least eight full-time faculty to replace recent retirees and meet the needs of varying departments. Last month, I shared with you that the WCCA Board had unanimously approved taking a grievance concerning our classified members vacation time to arbitration. We did file for arbitration in early March, but the college told us to expect a possible resolution. Last week, just before the 2021-2022 WCCA Board met for the first time, we received a settlement from the college. This settlement honored the original language and intent of the 2019 LOA. The WCCA, the WCCEA Board did accept this offer, and the arbitration has been pulled. Settling this issue will allow us to move forward with clarity as we look to the negotiation process in 2022. So much has changed this past year. However, the commitment of the WCCEA and its membership to this college remains the same, and we look forward to being partners in the decision-making process that will shape our future. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have we received any public comments this month, Vanessa?
No.
Are there any written communications we should know about?
There was one received that each trustee received a copy.
All right. Thank you. Let's move ahead to special reports. Graphic design, illustration, and letterpress printing. EVP Hearns, please.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm just going to give a quick introduction for Ingrid Ankerson. She's going to share with us the work that she did over her sabbatical. It's an interesting introspection of her experience and how she was inspired to be a teacher and how she's applied that to some work she's done around building a letterpress studio, looking at art, and how she adapted her sabbatical time this last semester. So I'll turn it over to Ingrid. She's presented this to our faculty a couple of months ago, and it was a very breathtaking presentation. Ingrid?
Thank you, Dr. Hearns, and thank you so much for inviting me to this, partially just so I could say thank you to all of you. It's been a really, I had a really wonderful sabbatical. So yeah, my name's Ingrid Ankerson. I live on a busy street, so you may hear some traffic, and I teach graphic design. I've been at WCC for about nine years now. And yeah, it was pretty much exactly a year ago that I, today maybe, that I got the email that my sabbatical application was accepted. So I was very, very lucky at that time. So I'm going to just share my screen. Okay, so as my colleagues were preparing to suddenly now live their entire life online, I was kind of doing the opposite. My sabbatical is very much about using, about analog, so I was very much offline. And this is me very much working with my hands on the letterpress. So I will explain all of that. But before I get to exactly what I did on my sabbatical, I just want to back up a little bit and talk about these three things, which kind of informed where I ended up. So the first is typography. The second is the printing press, and then the third thing is this building. The tech, one of the textbooks that we use in our type class, the author says typography is what language looks like, which is about as poetic and succinct of a definition as you can get for what typography is. It's really, it's the art and the science of, you know, putting words on a page or a screen or a sign or a presentation so that it's readable and, you know, easy to communicate what it needs to communicate. And I really like type. You can see some type right behind me even. And I try to get all of my students as excited about type as I am, and this button I wear on my work apron, it was actually made by one of our WCC students many years ago. And what I like about type is not just, you know, designing a page for communication, but I really enjoy just the shapes of the letters themselves and the potential that they have. And I think we can really sort of start to see some of that potential when you start to look at the letters in a different way, almost as an illustration. I learned about graphic design when I was in grad school, and I was actually going to school for writing, but I took a typography class not really knowing what to expect. And I loved it. And our first project, which is a classic type-one project, was to create a poster about a typeface using only letters from that typeface. So for me, suddenly, these things that I was using to write essays and poems and articles became the subject instead of the tool. And I was very hooked immediately. So that G that I just showed you is the first one here in the list that's signed by John Baskerville. But you can see there's so many interpretations of that letter, hundreds, and that's just one, one letter. So the G's that I was working with on my sabbatical looked more like this. So these are carved from wood, and you can see that they are in reverse, and they work like a stamp would work. But more specifically, I was working with letters that looked like this, so very, very tiny. This is made out of metal, and what I'm holding here is a, I think it's an eight-point lowercase Caslon letter G. So that leads me to this, which is the printing press, and you've probably heard of Johann Gutenberg or the Gutenberg Bible. So Johann Gutenberg introduced movable type and the printing press to the Western world. And really, that was, it was very revolutionary. It was sort of the beginning of mass communication. So before movable type and the printing press, this is a, this is a picture of the Gutenberg Bible. So but before the printing press, something like this would have to be done by hand. So a scribe, it would take a scribe well over a year to just make one single Bible. So with movable type and the press, now we have the individual letters that you could put together to create words, to create sentences, to create manuscripts. So it's still definitely a very time-consuming process, but once all the type was set, you could pretty quickly produce multiple copies. So letterpress is still very, very much alive today. These are some of the posters that some of my friends and people who I have been influenced by printed while I was on sabbatical, when we were all going through, you know, so many different things, including on the bottom, there is one by Jill Jefferson, who is my colleague in the art department, who is also a letterpress printer. I've actually learned a lot about printing from her. About 20 years ago, there was a huge resurgence or revival of letterpress when, thanks to Martha Stewart, who suggested to brides-to-be, if they wanted a really special invitation, they should have it letterpress printed. So anyway, back to my grad school experience, about 1999, and I was now in the process of changing my focus from writing to design because of that one typography class. So one of my professors took us on a field trip, and that field trip was to her house. And at her house, she had a couple of machines that looked like this, which blew my mind that she could have something like this in her house. I mean, it was a big house. But so for that class, then, she taught us how to set type like Gutenberg would have and how to set it, you know, lock it up on the bed of the press and then print it, and then we assembled our pages into a little book. So for me, it was just a very, very, my mind was already kind of spinning, learning about typography and graphic design. But then to have this physical object and this physical thing to do to produce something was really exciting. So between then and essentially now, a lot of things happened. But in 2017, something pretty life-changing for me happened, and that was I asked my then dean, Kim Hearns, if I could do a two-week letterpress workshop, and she said yes and helped me find the funding for it. And so I took a workshop called Type as Image, which was exactly what I was interested in at Penland School of Crafts in the mountains of North Carolina. This is the campus. It was stunning. So for two weeks, I really took advantage of the time that I had. So I was working in the studio from like 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM every day of those two weeks. And what I was interested in doing was using these kind of organic forms of letters and numbers to create geometric shapes. So on the left, that is me holding what's called a composing stick. So those are Os and Ones that I'm lining up kind of one by one, and then on the right, it's on the bed of the press. And so when you print it, and this is just two variations on the same thing, it looks something like this. I was invited back to Penland. I think they recognized my obsession. So I was invited back as a studio assistant for a week. And so I worked there, but in exchange for working, I got to have some time in the studio, and that let me really kind of explore some more ideas using some of the other tools that they had. So it was clear to me really after my first visit to Penland that I, you know, I needed to become that teacher that I had in grad school who had a house with the letterpress in it. So I set out on a quest to find a space that I could make that happen. And it took me about a year, but I found it in downtown Itswanny. If you know downtown Itswanny, you've probably seen this building and wondered what it's all about. Well, I'm in it right now, and so I live here with my two kids, and I actually put in an apartment, and I have a tenant who's helping fund all the work that this house needs. Same on a busy street. So and then this front building is what I imagined my letterpress studio to be. So shortly after I moved in, this press found me. People say, how did you find these presses? But everybody always says, you don't find them, they find you, and that's totally true. And right after that one came in, this one came in. And I love this guy's face as he realizes he has to get that through my door. But they got it. They came in. So these are two different kinds of presses. They work a little differently, sort of the same, same idea. The one on the left is the kind that I saw when I was in grad school, and it runs on electricity, and the other one is just runs by a treadmill, and they print kind of different things. So then the other piece that I needed to go with the press was the type. So these are actually right behind me where I'm standing now. These are filled with that metal type. So inside, one of the drawers looks like this, and the drawers are actually called cases, and they're laid out like this. So each letter kind of gets its own little cubby. You can see the E area is the biggest one because the E is used most. There's numbers, punctuation, and then there's also, one of the more interesting things to me is actually the spaces. So you can see there's like four to the M, m quads. Those are all, that's the space. So you know, when you're typing and you just hit the spacebar, it used to be, and for me, it still is, you actually have to put an object in there to make the space. Little fun piece of trivia, you can see on the right is a cabinet of type, and then sitting on the top are the cases, and you can see there is an uppercase and a lowercase. And if you look on the left, that's actually where those terms come from. So many of my cases of type came looking like this because I got them from places that look like this. So I spent a good amount of time just actually moving the type from the old yucky drawers to these beautiful, clean, mouse poop-free ones. And then I had the studio set up. So, you know, the whole kind of world had shut down, and I am in the perfect place for it because everything I need is inside. And I'm about to start my semester. So I started by coming back to those shapes that I originally kind of was exploring at Penland, which were these geometric kind of cubic, cubular shapes. So what's in my composing stick here is some very, very tiny lowercase L's that I, so you can see on the left, it's this little form that I moved around the press several times to create something like this. So my, you know, one of my main goal for my sabbatical was to produce a body of work and then have a show and invite you all to it, and it was very clear that that was not something that was going to get to happen. So I still felt like I just wanted sort of a way to celebrate the work that I'd done and have something to share with my colleagues and with all of you. So I asked a good and very talented friend, Donald Harrison, to make a video for me. So I'm going to show that, and it is the process of me making just one piece. And you can kind of see how my work sort of changed, and I don't remember if I shared the sound. I didn't before. So we'll see if you can hear any sound. If you're not, it's just music. Can you hear the sound?
Yes.
So I printed, I used a lot of paper. I printed probably close to 500 things, and easily 200 or more of them were terrible, you know, mistakes, experiments. But I ended up with a body of work that I'm really happy to have had the time to work on, and I'm really, you know, definitely sort of went in a direction I wasn't expecting. That tool, by the way, that I'm rotating, was designed just only to set type on an angle. So that's the purpose of that. So I'm just gonna, I have, I think, 15 of my favorite pieces I'm gonna share, and then I'll be done. On the left, you can see the whole thing, and then the right is just a little close-up. Thank you very much for the time, and also just thank you for being such a supportive and really wonderful place to work. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Ingrid?
I have a question.
I got a, yes.
So the pieces that you just showed us, your favorites, how many runs through that press? Give me a range, like the
Love your question.
Runs, the fewest runs for one of them, and the most runs for one of them?
Probably, well, the fewest runs would be the cubes because it's like more or less four. But some of them I ran through over 300 times. That's why I printed very many because I would make a mistake and then have to start over.
Gotcha. Thank you. I guess one more question. Do, do you actually, in your teaching at WCC, do you bring this letterpress work to your students and allow them to encounter it as well? And how do you do that?
Yeah, so I mean, this all happened during COVID, my space. But my dream, my goal absolutely is to have my students here and, you know, my typography students, but also the history of graphic design students could come. I know we have gone to other places that have letterpress studios to see things. But yes, absolutely. There's, I'm very, very excited to have students in here.
And then one last question. Looking forward to when you will be able to have students there. Have you had an opportunity to get your COVID vaccine yet?
I have not.
You're not my age.
Nope. I'm hoping, I just don't have the time to go to Ohio where everybody else is going right now in my age bracket. But, you know, I don't, I'm kind of a hermit, so it's all right for right now.
And you know, beginning April 5th, people much younger will be able to get vaccinated by, per the state protocols.
Yeah, yeah.
I think 16 and older.
Any other questions of Ingrid?
This is Vice Chair Davis. Now, I don't have any questions. Thank you, Chair Milligan, but what I will say is, Ms. Ingrid, you have given me a new level of appreciation for the alphabet.
My goal.
I'm an artist too, and I'm sitting here like, I want to take a class. So just, you know, pull me to the side, show me a little bit of what you do, and just let me tinker because this looked like a bunch of fun, and I truly appreciate you and what you bring to the WCC students. And I pray, and even for you, that one or two or all of your students reached a level that where you're at and can go even further. So thank you so much for what you bring.
I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Ingrid, are there other artists that do this work, or do you have a lock on the field or?
There are not very many letterpress people who like to work with the small type. So there's big wood type that you see a lot of really interesting stuff, but I haven't seen anything quite what I'm doing. Actually, I have drawn sort of a lot of inspiration at the beginning from typewriter art, which is another kind of some little thing. But yeah, nobody, nobody wants to work with the small type, and I love it.
I guess I have one more question. All of these that you presented are in one color, black or dark color. Are you able to work in multiple colors and integrate in those spirals, some multiple colors as part of the?
Yep. So that is kind of, I actually just today got $500 worth of neon color ink. So yes, I was done with the black and moving on to something brighter.
And so to introduce another color, that's another run through the press, right, each time?
Yes. Yep. Right, right.
Well, your video was very impressive, and you told the story nicely. We're really happy to have your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
Any other questions before we go?
Thank you, Ingrid. Thank you so much.
Thanks very much. Moving on to monthly reports, personnel recommendations. The recommendation is that the The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the monthly personnel recommendations as submitted. Do I hear such a motion?
Approved.
Or support, Devarti support.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? If not, Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Milligan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Treasurer Devarti?
Devarti, yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Fleming, yes.
Trustee Lando?
Lando, yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
McKnight Morton, yes.
And the motion's approved. Thank you. Financial reports for February. EVP Johnson, before we vote on the financial reports, are there any highlights that you'd like us to have?
Thank you, Trustee Milligan. Yes, a couple of points I'd like to, to show the board is if we could turn to the first page of numbers, please. There it is. Thank you very much. You'll, you'll note that tuition revenue is down about three, 3.2 million. Winter is settled here at about eight, 800,000 below budget. And student fees are also down and that would be the combined reduction in student fees both for last fall as, as well as winter. And that's largely in the contact hour fees because we just haven't been able to run our, our labs. You'll know that state appropriations are above budget. Again, the budget had assumed that we are going to have a 10% reduction. And thankfully that did not occur. So that's really helped a bit to offset the tuition fee reduction. However, down in other in auxiliary, so other would include our non-credit courses that we offer. And auxiliary would include things like the conference center. Of course, both of those have been directly impacted by the pandemic. So that in total, we're, we're running just shy of 3 million below budget in, in revenue. If we can move down to expenditures, please, on that page, you will also see though, however, that because we have not been on campus, that, that our variable costs of running on campus versus on, online con continues to trend favorably to budget. So in total, we're about five, 5.2 million below, below budget. And then lastly, the Health and Fitness Center continues to trend below budget. We anticipate that this, that this year we will run at break even, meaning no, no margin at, at all for, for the year. And that's because we were either closed and even when we reopen, we had a significant loss of members. The good news is for the board is that with each and every week, as folks have become vaccinated, we've seen a return of members and that's been a real positive sign. Of course, on, under their current state, state of Michigan guidelines, we can't have more than 30% capacity in the center at any point in time, but we are running well, well below, below that level. So if you could just scroll to the bottom, please, you will see that in total, we are, have a year-to-date surplus through February of about 1, 1, 1.8 million. And we would expect that trend to continue for the balance of this year. And that ends my report.
Thank you. Do we have questions for Mr. Johnson?
I have one question.
Go ahead, Dave.
So Bill, the, I just want to know, the tuition for spring is not totally in yet and that is very, very close to budget. Which is, I see a very positive sign going forward on tuition. People coming to, signing up for classes and paying tuition. Do you have a comment about the, how close it is to our budget?
Yes, thank you, Trust, Trustee Devarti. You know, this, these values here reflect the second half of spring smut, spring summer from last year. So at this point through February, registration for spring summer hadn't yet opened.
Oh, I got you.
And so, but, but to your, to your point, tuition, sorry, that the enrollment for spring summer is trending above last, last year, same point in time. And, and we think that's for two reasons. One is just the positive work that's gone on regarding the state's reconnect program. We're, we're seeing a lot of students returning. And also this time last year, the country and certainly the state was in a state of a, a just sheer alarm. And so there weren't a lot of students that had returned e- even thinking about going to school in spring, summer. So spring, summer enrollment last year was much later to show than this year. And that's also a positive sign is that it's showing us that students are feeling more comfortable to start to reengage and to enroll for spring, summer. So trustee Devarti, we would agree that, that those signs are very positive.
Thank you.
Do we have any, with respect to the fitness center, do we have any public assembly constraints from Lansing that govern us right now, Bill?
That, you know, the maximum, the maximum capacity that we can be at any point in time is 30%. And the state just up, up that from 25% to 30%. We have been running just at a fraction of even that, that level. But we are, we are anticipating as the months ensue and also assuming that the code, the COVID variant surge does, does not outpace the pace of vaccinations that, that we will get to that 30%.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, the recommendation before us is that the Board of Trustees receive the financial reports for February 2021 as follows. General fund, deferred maintenance fund, capital fund, and combined schedule of investments, all funds. Do I hear a motion, please?
So move.
And sport?
Support Devarti.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Vanessa, call the roll, please.
Chair Milligan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Treasurer Devarti?
Devarti, yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Fleming, yes.
Trustee Lando?
Lando, yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
McKnight Morton, yes.
The motion carries. Thank you. And before we leave, EVP Johnson, let's ask him to tell us about the facilities report, please.
Thank you very much. I really would like to just draw the board's attention right, right there. The two most significant projects that the college is working on relates to the Morris Florence renovation project and the Student Center. At the April board meeting and/or the retreat that will be presenting a full update, update to that. But just to let the board know is that we did conclude our bid process for ML. We're very half, half, report that we got very strong bids back in. And that we, we believe we're going to be presenting a very strong contractor to the board at our, at the next board meeting. The Student Center has been going very well. Fishback, the board had approved a contract with Fishback. They've done a very deep, deep assessment of the Student Center HVAC systems. We have vetted mult, multiple different HVAC designs that might be best suited for this building. And that is right on track. The only other comment that I, that I would like, like to make is related to our, our TI building. And that is, if you'll go to the next page, please, and item number five under Campus Repair and Maintenance. We have a project that has a lot of little projects in it. It's labeled a TI window replacement and the board had, we had approved a contract related to those windows. There are a lot of other pieces to that, including some waterproof proofing on the outside of the building. And also we took this as an opportunity since we're disrupting workspaces on the east end of TI, both first floor and second floor is to do, finish renovations in those spaces. So we have removed all the furniture from both the first and second floor, east end of the building. We are refinishing the walls and lighting and also carpeting. So it'll be a nice re, refresh for, for fact, for faculty and staff when they return. That's the end of my report.
Any questions about all this work? Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Remarks of members of the Board of Trustees, are there any trustees that would like to speak to us tonight?
Yes, this is trustee McKnight Morton.
Please, Diane.
Hi, I just want to, excuse me, I just wanted to give a brief summary of, I started the governance leadership today from the Governance Leadership Institute from AA, from ACCT. And it was very interesting. It, I had, all these years I've never been to this conference. It's a three-day conference from the morning to afternoon and there's different presenters and today.
Real in-person or is it virtual, Diane?
It's virtual.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, today was very interesting. Part of it is because our former trustee, David Rettich, was our presenter. So it was, what he talked about was roles and responsibilities and, and board responsibility, board and president's relationships. And I tell you, as long as I've been on the board, a lot of this I already knew, but some things I didn't. So he brought a good perspective onto the board, for me, about our relationship and how things should actually should work out. Because our role, yes, we are elected, but our, our role primarily is for the students and, and the community and to support the president of the institution. And, and that's, that's what our role is besides judiciary responsibilities. So it's all kind of wrapped up together. So it was just refreshing to hear some of this information. The second part was, it was called governing under one voice. And, and that was another thing. And, but we've had, it was a really good day. So I still have two more days to go before I can say how it actually works out. But there was, the second session had to do with University of, I'm serious, I'm sorry, community colleges from, people were from California and they're unified districts. And there was quite a few presidents from a different area, different community colleges around the country. So it was really good to hear them and what their take on certain topics were. It basically, it was all very good discussions and people had opinions and we just, we talked them out. So I think it was a good deal to, to do this. And I would just like to recommend other board members, when this comes up again next year or whenever it does, you know, that we, you know, that they would take advantage of it because you can, you can still learn from the institution. I mean, the institute of, for listening to other trustees and presidents and how they handle things, how they look at their board, how they look at projects and their relationship with the president and, and the community.
Thank you. Well, look forward to hearing how this comes out.
Okay. Thanks, Bill. Chair.
I don't want to best President Blanca, but before I turn this over to her, let me say that two weeks ago, I accompanied her to Lansing to in-person subcommittee hearings. It was the House, excuse me, House Subcommittee on Higher Education and Community Colleges. They had two colleges scheduled and two community colleges scheduled. And two of us were there live and two of us were virtual. And the virtual presentations did not go well, I didn't think as an observer. But when President Blanca got up there, she had great command of her data and she had a lot of warmth. And I think we've had a real hit of the, the appearance that day. So President Blanca, do you want to follow up on that?
Well, thank you very much, Chair Milligan. I hear you've really helped having you there. Shining in my, I don't know where it goes from all of a sudden. So.
It's a high-class problem to have.
Yeah, I guess it is. But anyway, yes, thank you. It was a good presentation and I did get a lot of help from my staff and helped assemble all that data. But it was very important because as you know, that appropriations committee.
We can't hear you.
Appropriations, can you hear me now? Can you hear me now? No? Can you hear me now?
There is no audio.
Um.
There, whoop.
Hear me now?
Yep, there you go.
All right, maybe if I sit right here, I'll make it short then. But it really took, it was spoken for the appropriations committee. Because they are the ones that are really the decision makers.
You're going in and out, Rose.
Okay. So you know what, Chair Milligan? I think your comments were right on point. Thank you. I apologize for that. I don't know why I'm going in and out.
I think that each of the four of us had about eight or 10 minutes that morning. And Dr. Blanca managed to put an awful lot of content on our college and the things that we do into it. And I think we were the first place finisher out of four presenters that day. So job well done. Thank you. Let's go into old business. We looked at a discussion on several of these last month. We have single-mode fiber installation contract in front of us. It's tab E in your packet. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve a contract for single-mode fiber installation from Challenger Technologies. For an amount not to exceed $220,000. Do I hear a motion?
So move, Devarti moves this resolution.
And, and is there a second, please?
Support, land out support.
Thank you. Any discussion, further discussion?
Now, help me to understand, what is single-mode fiber? I mean, I see what it is here, but can you just speak it what in layman's terms, what exactly this is?
On this than me, and I'd like CIO Kruger to explain that to you, trustee Davis.
Yes, so single-mode favor, fiber rather, is a transition mechanism that is much faster and that will address latency and really, really is the way to go for video and for high bandwidth, you know, high data type transmission. So it's just the, the standard, if you will. And our, our current multi-mode fiber, if you will, is, most of it was installed in 1993. So we're, we're just been using old technology and now this is the latest technology that's really much faster, much more suitable for the technologies in the communication and the video of the day.
So when this is, how long is this installation period? Is it like pulling wires, like what, you need to rewire something? Is it, you know, a chip you just plug into a computer? What, what, what's all involved in this?
So this is, this is strands of fiber that will be pulled. We're actually, this particular contract. It, yeah, this particular contract is going to take about three months to get done. It's, it's to pull full fiber for half of the campus. That's really all we could handle it, you know, one time. We'll need to do the others at a different time, but it's, it will be pulling fiber, it will be terminating. It will be, you know, connecting. It's, it's a fairly involved process, but it will give us, it will, it will provide the connectivity for us to have the redundancy that if you, if you remember when we spoke back in November, really, that was a long time ago. We talked about our, our network. We have core switches, distribution switches, and then access layer switches. So this will provide the infrastructure on which to plug in those switches in order to get better communications across campus.
Okay, yes. And no, I can't remember that far back, but thank you for refreshing my memory. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions?
I have a follow-up question.
Please, Dave.
So you say this will cover roughly half the campus.
Right.
And then are we, do we have a timeline to address further installation down the road?
Yeah, our, our plan is to submit the, go to bid, to go to bid next fiscal, to do the remainder is what we're hoping, that we can get the remainder done. next fiscal, to do the remainder is what we're hoping, that we can get the remainder done next fiscal.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, Vanessa, would you call the roll, please?
Karen Milligan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis? Vice Chair Davis?
Yes, yes.
Treasurer DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Fleming, yes.
Trustee Landau?
Landau, yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
McKnight Morton, yes.
And the, the motion passes. Thank you. Next item of business, Campus Wide Access Control System Upgrade Project. It's tab F in our packets. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve a contract with Johnson Controls, Inc. Campus Wide Access Control System Upgrade Project in an amount not to exceed $409,708.80. Do I hear a motion?
So moved. Landau.
DeVarty, support.
Support from Mr. DeVarty. Is there any discussion? Vanessa, please call a roll.
Chair Milligan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Treasurer DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Fleming, yes.
Trustee Landau?
Landau, yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
McKnight Morton, yes.
And the eyes have it. Thank you. Last month, we also discussed the appointment of an external audit firm. That's tab G. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees appoint the firm of Andrews Hooper Pavlik, PLC as the college external auditors for the three fiscal years ending June thirty, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, and twenty twenty-three. Do I hear a motion?
Landau support.
And support from Mr. Landau. Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the audit? If not, Vanessa, please call a roll.
Karen Milligan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Treasurer DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Fleming, yes.
Trustee Landau?
Landau, yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
McKnight Morton, yes.
Thank you. The motion is approved. The next matter of business is recommendation for new programs for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. The recommendation in tab H is that the Board of Trustees approve the new programs for fall twenty twenty-one as submitted. Do I hear support for the motion?
Landau support.
And a second?
DeVarty's second.
Thank you. Any discussion on this matter? Vanessa, please call a roll.
Chair Milligan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Treasurer DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Fleming, yes.
Trustee Landau?
Landau, yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
McKnight Morton, yes.
And the motion passes. Thank you. Next, we have recommendation for discontinuation of programs twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. It's tab I. It reads, the recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the discontinuation of programs for fall twenty twenty-one as submitted. Do I hear a motion of support?
So move.
And second?
DeVarty's second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Vanessa, please call a roll.
Chair Milligan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Treasurer DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Fleming, yes.
Trustee Landau?
Landau, yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
McKnight Morton, yes.
And that motion passes. Thank you. Going into new business. Discussion item, resolution to recommend the allowable twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, lower on tax rates. EVP Johnson, could you walk us through that, please?
Thank you, Chair Milligan. Yes, each, each year, we bring two separate motions to the board regarding our property tax rates. This is a first of two. The Michigan Community College Act requires that we get guidance from the board when preparing our budgets for the upcoming year. This would be fiscal twenty-two, that, that we should assume the maximum allowable rate that once that rate is approved by the county, that we would be able to use that when preparing our budget. This, this year's rate that you'll notice, point three eight eight five mils. It, it does reflect the recent millage passage that we had and restores that millage up to its full level. Of course, the heavily adjustment may further adjust that, but given the data that we have, that three eight eight five mils reflects that full millage restoral as a part of that composite rate. And then the calculated gross tax revenue based upon current assessed values and then trended at a one percent growth rate. Once again, we don't know what that rate is going to be. The county will make that announcement here about the middle of April, so we'll have a better hold on that. But really, the, the role for this one is to give us guidance as to whether or not we should use the maximum allowable rate when preparing our budget. Thank you, Chair Milligan.
Any questions from any of the trustees on this? Thank you.
Yes, I, I do.
Go ahead. Diana?
Yes, Vice President Johnson. My question is, the mills, are they the same mills as from last year? Or these are higher or lower from last year?
These would be trustee McKnight, or these would be the same mills as last year because those are the, the mills that we have, except for the latest millage that was approved. We, we, we know that upon that approval, that that rate was restored from the heavily adjusted rate up, up to the full one mil. So this, this rate reflects that adjustment. But we also anticipate that even that rate will be adjusted by headly when, when the county finally sets those rates.
Okay, thank you very much.
Trustee Davis, did you have another question?
I have a statement.
No, Chair Milligan, no, I didn't.
All right, Dave, go ahead.
I, I just want to say, the voters gave us very strong support at the polls when we recently went for our millage renewal. I'm strongly in support of passing this at the full level authorized by the voters. I, I do recognize as President, Vice President Johnson alluded to, we will see evolution narrowly slight reductions via headly in the coming years, probably, most likely, almost a hundred percent likely. But at this time, we should fully authorize it. I feel very confident that the voters have given us the support to do that.
Good, thank you. Any other comments, questions? Next, we have Target X, Customer Relationship Management System. Contract renewal. EVP Hearns, please.
This is a follow-up from our meeting last month where we presented an update on Target X. And now we are proposing, we're making a recommendation to do a contract renewal for three years. And the college continues to expand the use of the software to leverage its impact. As we noted last month, our recruitment advisors are using Target X as our main system of record. And we're looking to do more integration to extend, again, the leverage and the reach of the software. And this will be a three-year contract renewal.
Any questions of EVP Hearns? Thank you. We've got an action item here. A revision to the twenty twenty-one schedule of board meetings. And the recommendation is that the Board of Trustees establish and hold its annual spring retreat on April sixth, twenty twenty-one, at one PM. Do I hear a motion for this?
So move.
And support?
DeVarty's support.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I do have a question.
Please, go ahead.
Our family had planned for the last couple of months to move our daughter to New York. We've been fully vaccinated. Our daughter is relocating there with a job and a couple of other interviews for other jobs.
Congratulations.
Thank you. So I will be in New York, but I will be able to come in by, via Zoom or through the citizen participation channel, at least to view it, if not to participate. And so I, I would intend, intend to at least view it, which I know it'll be set up that we can do that. And if I can participate, I'm, via Zoom, as we do with these meetings, I'd like that, that capability. But, and I understand the state is opening up increasingly for government entities like the Community College Boards, School Boards, City Councils, County Boards of Trusted Commissioners is moving towards, back towards in-person meetings unless there's a state of emergency. So I understand the, the desire and need to start moving more in-person meetings. I'm just, because of these pre-existing plans, I won't be able to be there in person.
Well, may we ask Vanessa to see technically what we can do to support your participation?
Thank you very much.
We've got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Vanessa, would you call a roll?
Chair Milligan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Treasurer DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Fleming, yes.
Trustee Landau?
Landau, yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
McKnight Morton, yes.
And that motion passes. Thank you. The last motion of the day, do we hear a motion to adjourn this monthly meeting?
So move.
And support for that?
Support.
From trustee?
Trustee Davis, yeah.
Any discussion? Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Milligan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Treasurer DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Fleming, yes.
Trustee Landau?
Landau, yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
McKnight Morton, yes.
That motion passes. I'm sorry, there's no dinner to follow, but this meeting is adjourned and thank you for your time.